So it is 6:01 on Monday, October 19th, and we will call the school committee meeting to order. First on our agenda is the approval of our minutes from September 14th, 2015.
No, actually, October 5th, 2015.
Okay, sorry. I'm looking at the other one. October 5th, 2015. I was just testing you guys. Come on, everybody's awake now.
Right on target here.
Did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes? And if so...
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 5th, 2015.
Is there a second?
One second.
Any discussion, edits, comments? No? So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Abstain.
Abstain? Okay, we're in here. So we have one abstention, Mary is going to abstain. Next, awards and presentations.
October is National Principals Month, but I thought it would be not only just the principals that we should recognize by our entire senior leadership team. These are people who work long and hard days, all the time, doing the work that they need to do for the students of the district. They make it a joy for me to come to work every day, and so I thought it would be a good thing to recognize all of the senior leadership team tonight. So I just wanted to do some certificates of appreciation. Deb Barthlet, unfortunately, has a family issue and couldn't be here tonight, but Jen Champagne... If with nine fingers I could get this done.
That would be cute.
Jonathan Cavall. And excepting for Alison Jordan Dagnall.
Absolutely.
Just a solid one.
Thank you very much.
Karen Slazek Welch is not here tonight. David is hiding.
He is here.
Got your name. So David Lucas-Gavitt. Man of thousands of donations, you know. And David Donahue, who keeps us... And I'll obviously give them to Mary Burkes and Pat Winch. But, you know, I think that, you know, people need to realize how tirelessly these folks work to do what needs to be done to make sure we can give our kids the best that we can give them. And they need to know that I really appreciate the work that you do every day for our kids.
Thank you all very much for everything that you do. I echo that, you know, if we're talking about a great school district, it can't happen without you all, and thank you very much for everything that you've done and you will do for the district. So we have our visitors' comments section next. I don't know if we have any visitors...
Signed in to speak?
Signed in to speak with us tonight? Is there anybody?
Nobody has signed in.
Nobody's signed. Okay. All right, so I will skip every other meeting to make a plea to the camera to please come and talk to us, so we'll do it at our next meeting.
We're starting to take it personally.
Yeah.
Or no news is good news, either way you want to look at it.
Yeah, well, you know, just stop by to say hello. You don't have to stay for the whole thing. Okay, so with that, we don't have any visitors. We will go to our next section for the reports and recommendations of our superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First up is the strategic plan.
Hooray!
It's a little private joke that we'll get into later. I don't want to blind you, do you have a hat?
Yeah, okay.
Oh, okay.
I'm like you.
Pretty much. A little bit like Moses.
Sorry.
No, no.
You have in your packets, or your virtual packets, I should say, a copy of the strategic plan for the district. As you know, the most recent plan that you had expired in June, so we put out a call this spring to have people come together and had quite the committee as soon as this fires up. I take its time today. There we go. Ah, look at that. So I want to first just recognize the Strategic Planning Task Force members, and some of them are here with us tonight. Emery Everin, obviously, as the school committee representative. David Lucas-Gavitt, the director of technology. Karen Slazek, our school nurse leader. Deb Barthlet, Jen Champagne. John Cavall. Jamie Lewinsky, who is sitting there with the glasses on and the plaid coat, who is our ELL teacher and coordinator, so she represented district faculty. Barbara Biese and Jessica Swistak represented the middle school. Chris Brownell represented the high school. Mary Hoole represented the district staff. Chris Martin, the town administrator, was part of it. Mark Bale. Glenn Sexton, who was from the planning board, was also part of it. Dave DeRozers, who is our highway superintendent, also representing the Granby Lions Club. Chief Russell Anderson of the fire department. Chief Alan Wishart of the police department. Jennifer Silva, who is sitting right behind John, who is a parent representative. Jennifer Mallett, who is sitting in the back of the room, who is also a parent representative. And Dale Johnston, who's sitting in the back of the room, who is from the South Hadley and Granby Chamber of Commerce, who is also part of what we did together. And then Sharon Bale, representing the Granby Music Parents Association. So as you can see, we had a lively group engaged in several evenings of discussion in a hot cafeteria or periodically in an air-conditioned library. And so we first began to look at the mission and vision statements for the district, which were old and kind of out of date. So we tried to make sure that everybody had a clear understanding of what a mission and a vision are. And a mission statement basically is something that should concentrate on the present, sort of defines who the customers, and this comes from a business website, or who our critical people and our critical processes are in the desired level of performance. Versus a vision statement, which tries to focus on the future, becomes a source of inspiration and motivation to the group, and not just the future of society, but, you know, our, not just our own future, but the future of society in which we hope to affect change. So after a lot of discussion and thought about that, this was the mission statement that we came up with, which was basically, what is it we do currently and, you know, what are our processes? And so the group came up with that Granby Public Schools provide a safe and creative environment that empowers all students to be critical thinkers, socially responsible citizens, and effective communicators. We moved on to the vision statement and came up with the Granby Public Schools' vision is to provide real-world learning experiences that prepare students for success in a diverse and global society, realizing that the future for our students is to interact globally, not just locally. And so how do we do things that are authentic learning experiences, hands-on, you know, really getting in there in ways that we can try and prepare them for success? Then we did what's known as a SCOT analysis. Some people will know this as a SWOT analysis, but it is strengths, challenges, opportunities, and threats. SWOT analysis swaps out the C for W, which is weaknesses. I don't like to call them that. I like to call them challenges that need to be faced. So we went through a rather lively process with very large sticky notes and paper flying everywhere one night. The strengths and challenges are an internal analysis. What do we see are our strengths as a district or as the town of Granby? And the challenges that we face. With the opportunities and threats are more an external analysis of what we think is around us in the world we might not have a whole lot of control over, but might be an opportunity we could pounce on, or might be a threat or impede us from doing the work that we do. So we spent a whole night doing this, and this is the categories of strengths that came up with. And in the report that you received, you see all of the sticky notes that we put up, literally as they were typed, and Emery had a fun app on his iPad and took pictures that helped to keep things together. But the categories of strengths that we saw in ourselves was that we have strengths in our faculty and staff, our students, parents and caregivers, leadership programs, our overall environment, and our size being somewhat small. What you'll notice as you go through this is that some of our challenges will be the same as our strengths categorically speaking, but they have a different twist, and that's an okay thing to do. So when we look at challenges, faculty and staff, just faculty turnover, those kinds of things are an issue. Leadership challenges, again, leadership turnover. Scheduling, some issues with scheduling at the high school, as well as some things identified as a challenge at the elementary schools. Our programs, while there are strengths in our programs, there are also challenges that we face, particularly because of our size. Resources came up as a huge area in terms of having the financial resources to do what it is that we need to do. Facilities came up as a huge area of challenge for us. Community environment was more looking at sort of the town's support for the schools being a challenge that we have to face. And then technology, knowing that technology is really a key component of instructional delivery, that that's another challenge that we face, how are we going to gear up to do what we need to do instructionally for our kids? The opportunities and threats, again, were things that we brainstormed sort of outside of our control under these five lenses, societal, economy, political demographics, and technology. What are things in the greater world that we need to think about as we move forward? And again, those were brainstormed with some specificity in the report that you have in your hands. We then did a risk assessment on the challenges, and this is how it worked, is that folks had a chance to assess all of the challenge areas in one of three ways. If it was a high priority, it was critical to the survival of us as a district. If it was median, it's important to our work, but not necessarily critical. And a low item was nice to have, and we'll think about that farther out. When the risk assessment was done, this is what we came up with, that the high priority areas were leadership programs, facilities, and technology, that those were four challenge areas that really need to have some concerted focus on them over the next three years. So the reason why all of people's thoughts about the SCOT analysis are in the final report is that as things begin to come up to speed to where they need to be, you still have that data to go back to so that you can kind of take a look at those kinds of things. So knowing where we are and the vision of where we want to be, we then began to think about, well, what would be some ways in which we would look at this? And this is where the strategic part of this comes in. At the heart of all of this are programs. What is it that we offer our students in order to do or to accomplish what we see as a vision, which is to empower them to be, you know, contributors in a diverse and global society? And around programs flow those other three things, leadership, technology, and facilities. So the last activity we did was to then come up with a three-year plan that would have four goals, one in each one of those areas. And the reason why most strategic plans are usually three to five years, and we chose a three-year plan, because obviously you're in a transition to a new superintendent. This gives a new superintendent something to walk into, but also gives that superintendent a chance to say, gee, we need to now kind of move in another direction. So we thought about the five-year thing and then decided that probably three years was a better place to be. So the strategic area focused in programs, we came up with an overarching goal of developing and implementing pre-K or K-12 curricula, supported by authentic or real-world learning experiences in all content areas. And you can see in the report that we've established some objectives around that, some strategies to achieve those, who's responsible, and what the timelines are. After we sort of did that, then the group spun off into the other three groups and tried to say, okay, knowing that we need to really get our program house in order, what needs to happen in the other areas? So in the leadership area, the goal is that the Granby Public Schools' leadership team will exemplify transparency and trustworthiness and engage with all members of the school district and community. And again, some objectives, some strategies, who would be responsible, and some timelines for getting that done, that making sure that we are having good communication with the community, engaging people with us in a lot of different ways to be able to do that. The third area is technology, and the goal looks simple, but it's very resource-dependent, and that's to provide the necessary technology to support the curriculum needs. And technology is no longer a luxury. Technology is really a core tool to help deliver curriculum. And so what needs to happen infrastructure-wise? What needs to happen with devices? How do we get kids and teachers to collaborate, you know, using some sort of cloud-based technology, which right now we're trying to gear up for, you know, Google apps in the classroom and that kind of thing? So how do we make all of that become real so that way we can deliver the curriculum in ways that need to be done? And then the last area is facilities, and the goal there is to develop modern facilities that support authentic learning environments. And that goal is focused on two major activities. One is obviously trying to facilitate the process of getting a pre-K through six facility here on the main campus, so in addition to an renovation of East Middle School. And then to develop a five-year capital plan for Granby Junior/Senior High School that would get this building to address some of its deficiencies as well. So that's the whole thing in a nutshell. So how does this all drive our work? Well, first of all, it's going to drive the budget process as we move forward for FY17. How do we focus our resources to meet these areas of need that we've identified? School improvement planning, now that, or hopefully tonight after a vote, we'll have a strategic plan. This will give the individual schools and their school councils the opportunity to say, okay, how do we as a school fit into this plan? What's our role in this? How do we do our own school improvement planning in concert with what the district has set before it? And it's really the glue that holds everything together. This is what we should be about. We should be, it should be a topic at school committee meetings. What's going on with the strategic plan? How are things going? Where are you at with this? Those kinds of things. You know, really should be a focus of what you are looking at as a school committee. How is this, you know, how are we moving forward on the goals that we've set before us? So, questions, comments? Yes, ma'am.
Both.
Mm-hmm.
I was very impressed with the vision and mission statements. I thought they were very progressive, I'm looking at the mission statement in particular, and not wordy. In some of the school districts, you look and it's like paragraphs, it's just a bunch of words. So I really appreciate, you know, critical thinkers, socially responsible, effective communicators. That's like a holistic, which is something that we talk about for the next superintendent search committee as well. Hi, Mary. So I'm thrilled with that. And I guess the question that I have is how, well, first of all, will we know if these goals are directly related to the mission and vision statement, and how will we know that?
Okay. Well, I can probably answer that right now. I mean, just...
I'm just, like, as a working framework, you know, going forward, how do we know if they're directly tied in needing that mission statement or the vision statement?
Right. Well, one of the things when people talked about, for example, in programs, you know, we talked a lot about looking at ways to do enrichment activities, you know, or enrich the curriculum for kids who should have that kind of experience, not just remediation. And one of the things we realized is that because we don't currently have clearly articulated curricula in all content areas, that if we don't have a gleaming as a district on what the base curriculum is, we can't figure out what it is we're supposed to be enriching or remediating. So that, in order to get us to having real-world experiences that prepare kids for diverse and global society, we have to know what it is that we are expecting all of our students to be able to know and do throughout the years in Granby Public Schools. So that's something that begins on November 3rd. We're gonna, you know, work our way through a couple of curriculum documents are written, the rest are not, so we're gonna try and get that process underway so that people know what the curriculum is, then build units of instruction off of that, and then embed those learning activities that get us moving towards the vision.
So everybody, students, teachers, administrators, are going to be using this as their guide, this mission statement, and asking themselves, does this align with...
Right.
Producing, you know, critical thinkers? And so if the answer is no...
Then how do we change the curriculum? How do we provide professional development to teachers to do that kind of work? What is it that we need to do?
Okay. So it becomes the mantra, in other words.
Right.
So, Deanne, the other thing is that, under a couple of the goals, the term authentic learning was used. So in the vision, actually, we had authentic learning initially, and some folks objected to it, so they just changed it to real-life learning?
Some folks?
Yeah. So that's why you probably don't see, you might not see the connection, but actually the wording, the terminology used in those goals directly aligns with what the vision says. So the authentic learning piece is what everyone's going to be thinking about as they put their curriculum together, as they prepare the students for the future diverse global society. Whatever might be the context, it's going to be inspired by the vision statement. And whatever we do today will be inspired by the mission that we have.
Yeah, I guess the reason I'm asking is I want to make sure that these are just not words on paper, because these are really important words, right?
Absolutely.
So, and I don't know, again, I just want to make sure that we have ways of kind of checks and balances to make sure that we're continually asking ourselves, are we...
Are we moving in that direction?
Right.
Legitimate question, absolutely.
Because if we can accomplish this, then we'll be the best school district in the country, don't you think? I mean, it sounds crazy, but seriously...
Yeah. So the thing is, when we look at the overall plan, the strategic plan, we actually will have objectives and the actions related to all that with times associated with them and orders associated with them. And each year, we're going to have the opportunity to actually look at those timelines and the orders, and to ask ourselves, the owners, whether by those deadlines we accomplish, or timelines, we accomplish whatever we set out to do. And we always have the ability to say, okay, well, this wasn't really working the way it's intended, so make some tactical changes as necessary, and then put ourselves back on track. But you're absolutely correct, and that's how we have to think, that we have to always think that we are looking at our vision, and whatever comes out of the strategic plan aligns with that vision. Not only for this three-year period, actually, that's way beyond that as well. It's not something we can accomplish in three years, but we have to gradually get to that, to that vision.
No, the hope is that it becomes the culture, the norm, you know, a classroom teacher, right, is continually engaging and challenging students to become critical thinkers.
Right.
And socially responsible, whether it's recycling, like we talked about a couple months ago, or... This is, I was, when I read through this, I was very impressed, so thank you all very much. I mean, I...
We tried to keep it as clean and...
Simple.
Simple as we possibly could, because if you get something that's got too much in it, then you're not going to get it done, A, and B, it's too hard to follow, so...
I just echo Deanne's comments. It's obviously very well done, and I know that the areas under the leadership and the programs, the senior leadership team, and the teachers, and you, and we'll take care of all that. My biggest concern, until at least we get approved, will be the facilities, because, you know, we're about four months away from the town vote for the new, for the elementary you spoke of. And just in my dealings already, people are always saying, well, what about the high school? What about the high school? So I think getting on that as soon as possible so that it's not forgotten, but we get in the pipeline. Because I was told, I thought that the town has a five-year capital plan. I don't know what that means. I don't know what that means when they're going to buy a truck or a snowplow or a police cruiser, but we need to get in that line at the same time for the technology that's needed. Especially if we do not use any of the stabilization funds for the school building project, then, you know, that money would be there for these other venues that need to be taken care of as part of the whole system.
Right. And I've already procured the services of a facilities consultant to help us build the five-year capital plan for this building. We'll be working with John and myself to get that done, because I understand the capital planning committee starts its work in November, so we're on a fast track to get that done.
Be proactive with them, yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments?
Well, I should, I have one quick comment. This was actually a very engaging, interesting, and fun process. I really looked forward to coming here and sitting down with everyone and getting engaged in some, sometimes heated, sometimes educational conversation. And I learned a lot. I mean, if we'd only take the term that I just mentioned, authentic learning, what it is and what it's supposed to do for us. The whole process was a lot of fun. So first, I thank you very much, Judy, for taking the leadership on that one, for making it fun and making it stress-free, actually, at least from my perspective, and helping us get to this. And now, all of you who are able to visit with us today, and everybody else, thank you all very much for putting your time, for coming to every meeting, for engaging in the conversation, for including your perspectives in the conversations. Hopefully, everybody enjoyed it as much as I did, but I just wanted to throw it out there and thank everybody once again.
Yeah. Yeah, I had a great time. So it would be my recommendation that you vote to approve the plan, subject to appropriation, which means if money doesn't come through, we may have to play with it a little bit.
So if everybody got a chance to look at the plan, and if we are all good with the presentation, we will entertain a motion to accept the strategic plan as presented.
I'll make a motion to accept the Granby Public Schools' strategic plan, October 2015 to June 2018, subject to the town giving us all the money we want. Well said. Well said. Another town, we need the money.
I'll second.
Okay. Oh, did you second already?
I did.
Okay, so we're at second.
Okay.
Thank you, though. Any other questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank all of you.
And thank all of you very much. Very, very impressive.
Great. Okay. Hearing none. You also had, in your Google Drive, a report from the Macduffie School, and Steve Griffin, who is the headmaster, is here this evening, because this is part of your annual approval of their operation as a school. And I'm going to give you back your visitor pass that I took with me and didn't realize I had to walk in. Gave you a year and I went, thanks. So, what did you think, I walked off of it?
You're still welcome back.
Steve gave me a great tour of the building. We had a good conversation about some potential synergy between the district and Macduffie, so I think, you know, things are in order. I did go through the policy, did go through the packet that was submitted to you. Everything is here and in order per your policy.
Just in advance, thanks for this. This is the most I've seen about Macduffie in my time sitting here, so, rather than just getting an approval without seeing anything, so, much appreciated.
Thank you, Steve. I didn't do any of the work.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Yes.
It's actually important, because I agree with Jim that having to approve something without really having a strong context around it is not ideal, obviously. So much appreciated, all the answers and then the appendix that allow us to get some more detail around it, so thank you both for doing that. I have a quick question. I see that your instructional number, total number of instructional days is 161, so that does it mean that we are subject to different rules? Is that...
Private schools are not.
Private schools are not bound by that. Since we are going to approve, I just wanted to ask that. I wasn't sure whether that was the case or not. And kudos to you, actually, for doing some things that you called here, what is it, Magnolia Day and Mountain Day, and you called them to reinforce our mission and celebrate members of our community, which is great, especially in light of what we just saw. If we can periodically do that type of things here, but potentially do it together, since you mentioned community, some of the things for which we can collaborate, that would be great. I also saw that you have some great programs, and I think we are in continuous conversation, but if there are opportunities to leverage each other's resources and programs, that would be a... that, that would be a, uh, a great thing to do for, for the community as well. But thank you both very much again for this.
I didn't see anything here about not taking Granby students anymore, no?
Uh, we have not changed that policy.
How many, uh, Granby students do we, you have there?
Oh, I knew you were gonna ask, and I yet didn't, didn't...
Thirty-five.
It's thirty-five?
Yes.
It's thirty-five!
Only 'cause I had to put it in the Title II A grant, that's how I know.
I don't know if you noticed, but he said, "We have not changed our policy."
I know, sorry. No kidding, but...
I appreciate you reading the report.
Thanks for doing it for us, as I said earlier.
So, any creative ways that anybody's come up with to incorporate more relationship, collaboration?
I'm, I'm conscious that I'm, I'm not sure, am I to be invited to speak in anything like this, or...
I'll let you have at it.
We, we did have a productive, uh, initial discussion about this. There were two things that, uh, came to mind, uh, to me, right off of the start. Diversity is written into our mission, um, and it's something we value quite highly. We have a diverse student population, and, um, I, I think it would be great if Granby wanted in some way to tap into that, uh, diversity in preparing their own students for a global society. At this point, we don't have a concrete plan, but, um, some ideas that we've talked about, again, we have students who are interested in, in service and serving their community, so ways to, to partner with your students in any way, um, in service is, uh, is a great way for us to begin that relationship. And, uh, I think the, the other thing that we, uh, we had talked about is, is we're both small schools, and we're both looking to, to offer big programs in a small school environment, so, so anything that we can do to share, um, to make that possible, I think is, is something we're always interested in listening to.
So, is there, you know, what, what would be the next step in order to solidify a more concrete plan? Because diversity is something that came up in, you know, in the vision and the strategic plan, so I think that's a great idea, and our kids going for Diversity Day is a great start. So, I don't know how we would go about, you know, would we, would there be a committee created? You know, I, I just hate to see us do this at one meeting, and then, you know, nothing else follow through on. I think that's another great idea, shared curriculum somehow, uh, you know, we are both small schools. That would be fantastic. Those are two really good ideas.
Yep, and as part of, um, the Title II A grant process, um, you know, we offer, um, professional development, and so I did have a conversation with Steve, and, uh, you know, told him we were gonna be all about developing curriculum and building units of instruction, so he's going to send representatives over when we have days off, and there's a potentiality that we could share some training with them directly as well, so that there's some professional development, so that teachers have a little synergy as well.
So, I guess, you know, going back to what you were saying, completely agree, every year, we have this approval process, which, you know, uh, to be very honest with you, is, is always, uh, really just we have to approve something that is not within our district. But, that said, this also gives us an opportunity to talk about it. Much appreciated that you're here personally, not to put you on the spot, obviously, all these questions, just to, uh, initiate that conversation, but I trust that you and Judy will continue these conversations, and when, whenever we have our, uh, future superintendent, we're gonna, uh, continue those conversations, because at the end, uh, these are schools that are part of the same community, and, uh, there are, hopefully, and potentially, some, uh, some resources that we can, uh, we can use collectively. So, I don't know if...
So, the answer...
We're expecting anything right now, is that...
No, 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 I, I just, I just know that I don't want it to end in a conversation at one school committee meeting, so, uh, it feels like we need to do something a, a little bit more concrete to get, you know, get the process going, as opposed to, well, we'll see you next year. It's great having these conversations, and, um, so I, I don't really know, I'm, I'm just asking what the next step would be, and is there something that we can do to promote something more formal? I don't know, is that a fair question?
Yeah, I think it would be, uh, uh, just an opportunity for Steve and I to sit down and kind of brainstorm some ways that we could do that, and, uh, you can come to my shop for a little coffee and whatever, how's that?
Great to get off campus.
So, would it be reasonable to say, you know, at the next school committee meeting, or two school committee meetings, have some kind of follow-up?
Sure.
To, um, is that fair enough?
It's good.
Okay. I don't wanna seem too demanding.
No, actually, I think this is something that we've been talking about, uh, the last couple of years, how we can, uh, improve, uh, or build upon the relationship that exists, and we can do that. Again, if you, if you send your representative next time, we'll understand, but hopefully, we'll see you sometime in a couple of meetings or so to, to, uh, continue this conversation.
Great.
And thank you for this. Really helpful.
Do we have any, we have to vote on this, right?
Yes.
Do we have any other, uh, comments, questions, or can we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of approving the McDuffie report as presented?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you again, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you, Steve.
This is the, uh, show me the money segment, is that...
What money?
There you go.
Um, you should also have had in your packet a copy of the financial report for FY16, as it currently stands. If not, Archie has some. He made some extra copies, if anybody needs one, and, uh, the floor is yours, Mr. Donahue.
Okay. Well, again, um, this is very comparable to the last month's report in that it only reflects three months of, uh, spending in the fiscal year. You can see we're starting to ramp up, uh, spending in terms of, uh, payroll, salaries, with school back in session. The critical areas here that, uh, I gave you the last time, are still really maintenance of the facilities. As you can see here, we spent, in three months, spent and encumbered 60% of our budget for maintenance of facilities. And, uh, that's striking. So, it's, I look back at the report I gave you this month, a year ago, and basically, I said the same thing. Maintenance is a critical issue, and we're constantly spending money, uh, you know, trying to repair things, so...
Putting out fires.
That's the one area of this budget that, I mean, we're sure to exceed, uh, we have for the last several years, and, uh, so we're just gonna continue to monitor that. We, as, uh, Dr. Hool has pointed out, uh, we have some, uh, facilities consultant coming in, gonna devise, um, a five-year capital plan for the facilities, and hopefully, that will help alleviate these budgetary issues that we're here.
So, one quick question, um, that comes to mind is, as you said, if we have been seeing these, uh, issues the last so many years, uh, why don't we reserve some amount in there? 'Cause at the end, it is always tougher, it seems to me, to go back to the town at this point and say, you know what, we, you know, we presented a budget, but we did not really, uh, know what was coming our way. By the way, we had the same issue the last so many years. Uh, it, it is more difficult to go back to town, to ask for it, to justify, uh, the need, especially when we might have some history that tells us, uh, this is, this is likely to be expected. So, it might be, we might wanna think about that as we put our new budget together.
Exactly.
For example, when I, when we had the leak in the roof, um, you know, I had a roof study commissioned, and I just got the report back, and this roof is not in good shape. So, you know, you can patch till the cows come home, but at some point, you're gonna have to think about replacing the roof on this building.
Could you explain the, the custodian operations line versus the maintenance line? What's the, what, what do you do there? What's the, what's the difference in those two lines?
Uh, the custodian, you know, the custodial salaries in that line, that's a, a bulk of it, uh, probably at least half, and the operations would be electricity, heat, telephone, gas.
But, but even then, if this is correct, we're at about 50% there, but we're only, we're not anywhere near 50% of the year.
Well, that's because we encumbered the salaries, we, we anticipate, we know what the salaries are gonna be.
Right.
For the few custodians we have.
That's correct.
Do we have any idea what the estimated cost to replace the roof would be?
Um, I don't have a firm figure, um, I'd have to find out. That could potentially be something that we could also look for some reimbursement from, uh, MSBA on, so...
Could we lump in other things?
There are certain things that MSBA will help fund, and certain things that it won't, so, yeah. But certainly, as the building consultant works through the capital plan, well, thus, we'll ferret that up.
Why, just explain, no activity in the tuition to non-topic schools, that's it?
Yeah, there's...
What is that?
Well, that's...
What's that waiting for?
Invoices.
Invoices, yeah. Yeah, basically.
Yeah.
You anticipate that, that...
Or, or we've spent it out of, uh, to, you know, line 30, tuition to mass public schools. It's possible that it's got charged, some of those bills have been charged, yeah.
Plus, over the summer, some placements changed, some folks who were going to private placements are now in, uh, public placements, so, you know, what's the case of, we just need to transfer money.
That line's very much in deficit now.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Well, actually, uh, but following up on that one, I would hope that the reason is because we don't have the invoices, and not because we are not using those two lines interchangeably, because it makes it very difficult for us, again, just, you've probably heard this, uh, from us several times, it makes it very difficult for us to follow, first of all, where, where, uh, we have the expenses, and also intelligibly plan for the future as we look at these, where we have our gas, where we, uh, are not planning, uh, as well as some other lines. Um, one more question that I had is, I see that some, some one items, the, uh, the encumbered amount is almost equal to the amount budgeted. Does it mean that we actually are foreseeing spending that amount, and we wanna block it and keep it in that...
Correct, correct.
Line, okay.
Most of those cases are salary lines, yeah.
Okay, and the, the one, uh, one and a quarter million or so that is projected surplus, what does that mean at the...
That just means that's, it's not spent or encumbered at this point in time.
Okay, so, point in time, basically.
I would say, within probably the next month, we'll have everything tracked to be either encumbered or, and we'll, we'll have a better idea of what's available, uh, as we move forward.
So, um, the last couple of meetings, we found out that there are some unexpected expenses that came our way, and, uh, I, I think, if my memory serves well, we, we asked whether we should immediately consider doing something about it, whether it's, you know, uh, it, it's the right moment for us to go and ask the town, uh, in the near future, and I believe the response was, let's just wait and see, because there might be, uh, some positive developments coming our way. Are you seeing anything of that nature?
Uh, I'll be honest, I, I, I don't yet, but I haven't really looked that hard. I'm still, today, just finished FY15, uh, closing that out, so, uh...
Hopefully not.
Be looking more into this budget, uh, as we go forward.
So, it sounds like at the next meeting, it'll be, you'll have a better idea.
We'll have a better handle on, on where things, you know, really stand.
And since you mentioned it, so we're all set with, uh, 15, and we're on the same page with the town, and everything has been...
Everything's been reclassed appropriately, yes.
Everything reconciled.
Thank you. Any other questions?
That's mine.
Okay, thank you, Archie.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, um, I was thinking it might behoove us to move the after-school programs conversation, to this point in the agenda, and I can finish off my report later, only 'cause Chris Taggart is here, um, and so I don't want him to feel like he needs to be here till, you know, the bitter end with us, so...
Let's do that.
You had asked, um, for some information with regard to, um, the, um, after-school program, so, uh, as I showed you at the last meeting, I put through a survey, uh, the contents of which are, um, in your packet, as well as the results of that survey, we had 70 responses overall, altogether, uh, to the questions that were asked in the survey, uh, and the data are there.
If I may, I apologize, if I may interrupt for one second, I think we're very...
I do, thank you.
Have something to say?
Because I'm an employee, I'm going to recuse myself from the conversation, and we're out there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry. But anyway, um, I did, so I did put together some data for you on, um, the perceptions of parents. I was pleased to see that 70 people responded to the survey, um, which I thought, I thought that was great.
We get 70 responses to this?
Yep. But, um, you know, so, um, you can see that of the 70, 48 have accessed the programs, and then, um, you know, those who hadn't, um, gave us some reasons why they had not, um, done so. Uh, I then took sort of the major activities that were offered in the after-school program, and just try and find out how many students from the two buildings, um, you know, and also parents who said they had children in both buildings, what they accessed. I asked the, then asked the question about, were they still interested in the current one-day-per-week thing? There was high interest in that. Some, not sure, um, asked if they accessed other programs, like Children First or the East Meadow Study Club, and you can see that, uh, obviously, uh, the Study Club is not offered at West Street, so that was a no for them, and Children First is primarily a West Street program, so... Then, when you get down to taking a look at what people might like to see in after-school programming moving forward, you can see that, uh, 25 of the respondents really wanted to see more days per week. Uh, 17 of them wanted to see longer hours in the afternoon, 22 of them wanted to see option for homework or extra help. Uh, 37 wanted to see arts-focused, whether it's drama, music, visual arts, enrichment, like robotics, et cetera. Uh, 40 people and 12 people said that they would like to continue, um, the current program, so... Um, I think there is some interest in maybe looking at something that's a little bit different. So, that said, Chris Taggart is here from the Collaborative for Educational Services to talk a little bit about what the collaborative has to offer, so, of course, I'll turn it over to you.
Would you like to come and join us?
Sure.
Uh, don't worry, I'm just, I'm yours.
Let's just pull a chair. That gong fishing seems appropriate, right?
There you go!
It's an after-school activity, isn't it? So, hi, I'm Chris Taggart, I'm with the collaborative, and, um, we've been doing after-school for more than a decade. We currently have 13 sites, of which some are fee-for-service, which would be the case here. Um, I learned that there was some interest in perhaps offering an after-school program for your elementary schools. I'm here to take any questions on our model, it's a flexible model. The typical afternoon includes a snack, uh, homework support, uh, recess for elementary school students as well, if they're moving, and then the enrichment activities, which is easily the most exciting part of the afternoon. And those pieces can be moved around in terms of what you start with, um, what you end with. And I think with a fee-for-service model, uh, you know, some parents only want half of the afternoon, some want the entire, so there can be flexibility in what's charged. So, there can be flexibility in what's charged on that. And activities that we offer can be a range of performing arts, it can be technology-based, it can be STEM, so science, technology, engineering, math. And we try to hire a blended staff. We like to have some of the school day personnel work in the after-school program. If they're looking for a part-time job, why drive off? And we also like to find the specialists in the community as well. If someone is a master karate expert or carpenter or what have you, they can be a great fit. Something our programs are really good at, and it's an option as a development model, where we work with the school over time to bring in an academic piece that doesn't reduce the fun or the engagement with students. But let's say one of your schools has lower scores in math, in terms of NCAS scores, and also with their school testing or ELA, that we can get into our enrichment activities, let's say poetry and newsletter or ELA. And we'd work with the school principal and her critical or his critical staff on kind of focusing in on just a few areas of ELA that if some students attended and we worked on that with them, it would be, it would help the school long-term maybe improve scores. But not every student needs to work on low test scores, so we try to make it so the activity is good for all students who are in it. But we do have that ability to do that. And we have generated data in other schools where we did a compare and contrast and proved pretty much that students in after-school, their growth model data was much higher than their peers.
Is there a charge for that data, for gathering that data?
It's, it's an option on, yes, there is. It's, it's an option that comes in the budget.
What schools in the median area are you presently in?
We're kind of, we're all over Western Massachusetts. So Southampton is a fee-for-service program we have. We're East Hampton, we have three programs there. We're in Amherst. But we're also in West Springfield, we're also in Greenfield. I just came from Turner's Falls, I was at Shekild Elementary, have a brand-new program there. Palmer. And we do have elementary school programs, middle school programs, a junior high school program, and a high school program.
So as you saw from the survey results, some folks actually said one day per week was enough. And I, I took some numbers out because some folks said we're not part of either schools for whatever reason. And so I'd taken those out and looking at the twenty-five that said, we would like more than one day, or we would like more days per week. So between all those numbers, from one to multiple, since you mentioned the fee per service, is it a linear equation, or if we have one day, it becomes more expensive, and if we go three days, it becomes cheaper? Is that the way it works? Which way is the better way of looking at it?
The first, it's a, it's a flat fee per afternoon.
Flat fee, okay.
And that's, you know, a typical afternoon in most elementary schools, let's say you end at three. I'm not sure here, I'm brand-new, when your school day ends.
Two thirty.
And we'll run two and a half hours, two to two and a half hours, and get those different components in. And an approximate cost could be, let's say, fourteen dollars per child per afternoon. But if you want half-days, that's a longer day and that's got an increased cost to it. If you want school vacation programs, February, April, that's, that mirrors the half-day cost, more like a six-hour day. So, it's, if you have one day, let's say it's just Mondays, it's not going to be any different than if it were a Monday through Friday. Each day would be the same cost structure unless it were a half-day or school vacation. Or if they want, the parent family wants half of an afternoon, then that would be less impressive.
And there are a number of activities that you can, you can offer. Are there packages that include a combination of those, or is it a la carte, just we basically say, we would like to have these types of activities for our own after-school program and you put it together based on that request? How does it work?
Well, if the survey garnered what families would like to see offered, it would be interesting to see what the top choices were. And then in terms of hiring, trying to find staff that can provide those choices. But if we can't find this niche-type program and have that person run it, then maybe next session, down the road we would. But after survey results, or sometimes despite survey results, something that was supposed to be popular doesn't get attended. That has happened when I've put programs together, for instance, of the Greenfield Middle School. Many, many students told me they wanted a Spanish course. They put it into place and then they didn't sign up for it. So once in a while that happens as well. The model includes, we like to have an onsite manager who, that's kind of what I used to do once upon a time. I was an onsite site coordinator for an after-school program and they get trained by my office and they eventually hire. And find, and they change up the offerings each session. Let's say we've got four eight-week sessions during the school year. I'm just throwing that out there. And each session, you'll have registration packets, whether it's just a one-day-a-week program or five days. There'll be, hopefully if the program's popular, thirty, forty students coming. And they will have these different options and we'll learn what they like. We'll take their suggestions once they're in the program. And we end up hiring the activity leaders who can teach more than one hobby, something they're good at, and develop them. Because if this is something that's a go and is a program that, even if it's one day or multiple days, then these, that site manager and then their core staff, hopefully people they would hold on to, some would come and go, but some would stay. We give them development. We give them professional development and support. They're not, you know, isolated and left alone. Again, we have thirteen programs. We have managers' meetings that are once, you know, every five weeks or so, that onsite manager gets together with all the other site managers and we go over all sorts of after-school specific stuff to make the program better.
Just logistically, think of our building, where do you do these activities?
Most are on school grounds in this school. Some can go off-campus depending on what it is or have field trips.
Do you never have space constraints within schools in terms of other places being used or teachers giving up their classrooms?
Well, again, it's nice to hire a few of the teachers to do a little end-around on that. And then build up the reputation and have those teachers or aides or even a reading specialist or guidance counselor with all they book, speak on behalf of the program and to earn the trust of the building. But it's also in an MOU that we should be guaranteed some space to avoid that problem. But with respect, if the gym is booked or a library is booked and that's on the books, then we don't get that space. But we do need some space. And that would be a doubt before anything else, is what I was.
Now quickly, are you able to put these customized programs together?
You know, a month. I mean, you gotta hire people and then we have to train them. They get the registration packets put together. Doing it too quickly creates problems, yet you don't want to wait forever. So that's a guesstimate.
Okay, makes sense.
Well, that sounds, I think that sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
Actually, my first thought was, really? You can do all that in a month?
Maybe a little longer, but it's our experience. We even, we have a large network and sometimes we get lucky and we have people who we can give more hours to and they can just zoom on over and help and teach. The ads, when you put out ads for people to teach, we do in-house in your schools to try to get interest. Typically, I end up, if this were to happen, presenting to school staff the idea with the principal's blessing and some large group meeting of theirs, and talking about the model and trying to get people to be interested to work. Once they're done with their contracted hours, no conflicts there. And they, if they are hired, they're an employee of the collaborative.
Would you pay them?
That would be something to be determined, to be competitive.
Typically?
It ranges from communities. I would have to find out what after-school pay is and the norm is here. The ranges are, I don't even want, if one town is so much different than the next and we just try to make sure, whatever it is. Let's say it's thirty dollars an hour for a classroom teacher in town A, but it's twenty-five for a classroom teacher in town B. Because teachers paid a little less, we, and that's the norm, then we try to strive for that. That also means we can only have so many on staff because it's an expensive position. But it's an important position because a couple of teachers get back going to the homework center. And they can help the other community staff be better in helping with targets or be mirroring the strategies used during the day. So we're not simply doing our own wild version of how to solve that math problem that doesn't have any linkage to the classroom and that can be confusing. But then pay for specialists, people who are the equivalent of a classroom teacher or black belt, someone who has their own dojo. It's going to be pretty similar because they have a level of expertise. Then you have college students who could be really good at something, they're lower level, they're professionals, aides, you know, are less expensive. But we try to mirror what's competitive and, et cetera. But I wouldn't want to make up a figure. I don't know the norm.
So I guess the question is, how do we compare what the in-house program was to what you're offering, right? Because we want to make sure that if this turns out to be more expensive, it could be problematic. So is there some way to compare the two?
Also, I guess you're absolutely right, but we also have to be able to compare what is offered, whether or not we're able to offer something that might be popular here in-house versus elsewhere. So there are a lot of factors that we have to think about, but cost is going to become a major issue for us. So I don't, I don't know what the answer is to that one. Do you guys have any answer how we can actually make some comparison that may allow us to make a decision sooner than later?
Well, the fee that was charged for the after-school program.
It was about sixteen dollars, but it depended on the activity because they, if there was an activity that required a lot of supplies, like art supplies or whatever else, then there was an added cost. But I think it was sixteen dollars was like a base.
But that was for a four-week, one-hour session per?
And didn't somebody say at some point that that was part of the challenge in attracting folks to do it, was the low cycle?
Yeah, because it's less, the contractual amount for teachers is thirty dollars an hour and what was being paid was twenty-five dollars an hour. So it was harder to get teachers to do the work.
So, so we would have to, at the very least, if we decided to stay in-house, raise that rate? To be comparing apples to apples?
Right. The difference would be the length of time of the program. Because basically what was happening was it was being done one way a week, one day a week, on the days that late buses ran so that the kids could hop the late bus.
Yeah, so that's another distinct difference, is that what you're offering is more of a program as opposed to a four-week?
Activity.
Activity. Any thoughts on, you know, how you feel about the differences in offering an activity versus a program, pros and cons?
What's going to cost the parents more? And we have that ongoing thing of interfering with the children's first.
Right.
If we don't politically get into taking money away from, I mean, I don't know if people are taking part in that. But that's, that's something we talked about earlier that could be a factor.
Right.
Versus our present program doesn't really do that because it's, it's only four or five times, you know, three times a year or so. So it doesn't.
But according to the surveys, that's not necessarily a con on the, I mean, just on the surveys.
Yeah. And then, and forty-four out of the seventy people said they were, would be willing to pay more money for a larger, more in-depth program. Some people not sure and a few, you know.
But again, we don't know how much more money they're willing to pay. That's the, we don't know what it is. So, that's a tough thing to guess and gauge it.
So, when you were throwing out the twenty-five or thirty, is that the cost to the student?
No, that's the potential hourly rate for a master or high-quality teacher.
So what would be a typical cost to a student?
Approximately fourteen dollars an afternoon for the standard afternoon, which is about two and a half hours. An hour model. This can be tweaked and changed, but I'm just speaking out for our president.
And how much were the kids paying?
Sixteen.
Sixteen for an hour.
So four dollars an hour.
So it's around, it's comparable in that regard?
Yep.
They're paying fourteen dollars every week times four weeks. Fourteen times four versus sixteen.
Right.
Well, a day ago.
I know, but I'm thinking just, just to compare it one day a week is the best way to compare it. You're already in more. If you do two days a week, you double that, that kind of thing.
Yeah. So you're looking at potentially going from four dollars an hour to six dollars an hour is what the comparative would be.
And also a much longer length of time. So you're multiplying that by several weeks more.
Yeah, potentially several days times several weeks, so it adds up.
But six dollars an hour for a babysitter or childcare.
I mean, if, if parents are actually rushing to get back from their work, it's part of the reason why they like these programs or they think that the student needs some enrichment and we can offer that. In fact, you know, nothing against it. I actually like kids having a good time. But in our previous programs, we had books and reading activities. And I thought legomania would have attracted more, but the rest of them are pretty much physical activities that we were offering. We might be able to offer some different in-classroom and reading activities. And some, some parents might find that more helpful. Chris mentioned NCAS, NCAS support, that might be one aspect. I don't know which way it would go, honestly. I don't think anyone wants to speculate. But that's why we should just quickly get into some conversation to find out how the prices compare, whether or not we have any pull. We can actually, to be honest, I don't think we see ourselves offering this, this semester, right? Just next semester, we're going to be doing it. So it gives us some time to do some additional survey to see whether the pricing will cause some issues for us or not, and then we can get back to you and.
And what, what's worst-case scenario?
In terms of?
In terms of, let's say we do something different.
Yeah.
And we have you guys, you know, try it out and we decide after the first go-around, it didn't, you know, it didn't pan out as expected. What's worst-case scenario?
Well, I don't, actually, that's a good question. When you said fourteen dollars per student, how many students are you basing that on?
Well, it, we like to have at least twenty a day for to float, if you will. And to have the site coordinator and at least another staff person and, and of the costs. But our model seeks to have thirty, forty students a day to have our activities be popular and that they want to be there, that they form relationships with the staff. And that's, the research shows in after-school, it's the adult, it's the youth relationships that drive it. So you've got to hire the right people. So we hope to have a program, it would take time to develop, and it's not guaranteed. But if it does succeed, it could turn into something you could advertise on your website, or something that makes your school better. We have other elementary school sites where to not have an after-school program would have parents in uproar. And in little schools of two hundred, little less, you know, kids in that school, we've got thirty, thirty of them attending an afternoon. It's a need that maybe some families might have.
I just have a question. So if, just for an example, if we were here five days a week and apparently we want to do one day a week?
That's fine.
And you mentioned that it could be like for an hour, so that we could have kids come in for that one hour, hop on the late bus on those days.
Yeah, and it would be a reduced charge. If, if there's a way to find out, there is a group of parents that would like that, then, yes.
So you'd be looking at, you know, say, maybe seven dollars a day versus fourteen dollars a day?
Yeah, you could budget it around.
Okay, so, so when you say not starting until next semester, what does that mean?
Well, we were, the last time when we talked about this, we were thinking that we're already late in October.
Right.
It's going to take a little while. So it's going to be already mid-November at the very least. And we don't want to start something in December because of the holidays and the break and all that. We would start in January or whenever, start school early next year. That's what I mean by that.
My hope is that we, if we decide to pull the trigger on this, we allow you guys sufficient time so we're not scrambling around and pulling something halfway and allow you guys enough time so what you're bringing to us is excellent.
So our decision probably will have to be within the next two meetings. By mid-November, we have to make that decision and just run with it so that you guys have enough time to put it together.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes, actually, excellent point. We need time to advertise.
Right, right, and give, of course, you know, opportunity to get to faculty meetings and all those kinds of things. To talk with teachers or.
So that sounds more like next meeting to me.
Cool. Is it, is it, is it something we can do by next meeting?
You have sort of an MOU template, Chris, so maybe that would be a good way to start the discussion, is if we could get that template from you, and then the committee could take a look at what the agreement looks like, then you'd have a feel for what you would be signing on to as a committee?
Yeah, sounds good.
And the MOU is something that goes back and forth, and you can put suggestions, or take this out, can we have that? And my chief financial officer from the agency, he'll be in that conversation until we're agreed upon whatever it is that we're going to do.
And then as far as comparables, how would we go about that?
Well, I mean, basically what you're looking at, based on what Chris has described was, you're looking at something that's about six dollars an hour versus the current four dollars an hour. If you want to look at it comparing apples to apples in hourly relate rate. If you're going to do fourteen dollars for a two-and-a-half-hour afternoon, you're looking at approximately six dollars an hour versus four dollars an hour that's been charged for a very long time.
And this is a theme that we are bumping into, whether it's athletics or after-school, that we would like to keep the fees low, however, when you keep the fees low, then the quality or the.
Yeah, now let's do this right.
Yeah, so let's see what we get with your analysis, let's see the MOU if, if we can do it quickly, and let's see if we can get this, find our next meeting to have a conversation, so we can get back to you guys sooner than later. Any other questions for Chris? So we don't have anything to vote on tonight, right?
No, so we'll put this on the November second agenda, and then, you know.
Chris, thank you very much for taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
It was very helpful.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer's going to go home and try and get some sleep.
I'll try.
All right.
Okay, so back to emergency operations?
Mm-hmm, you have also in your packet somewhere, if I can now figure out where I am. Here we are. I did as, I told you I would at the last meeting, put out an invitation to folks to serve on the Emergency Operations Plan Task Force. So it would be myself, Al Wishart, Russell Anderson, Jim Petrus by draft, John Cavalo, Allison Jordan Gagnar, John Champagne, Deb Barthlet, David Lucas Kevitz, James White as School Resource Officer, then teachers who volunteered to be a part of it were Barbara Byes, Jamie Lewinsky, and Greg Williams, Dave DeRozers from the Highway Department of DBW, Jean Crosby for the Board of Health, Carissa Lise, who's the new Inspector of Buildings. And then we had six parents who showed an interest, which I also thought was great. You know, Lee Arabic, Cheryl Fernandez, Jennifer Mallett, Lisa and Ronald Mo, Jessica Randall and Jennifer Silva. So we've got some town officials at the table who would be part of potentially an emergency operation in some sort of hazard. We've got some faculty, administration, fire, and police, so I think it's a good cross-section of groups. So if you would vote to appoint these folks as members of the task force, we will get to work.
I also see some returning volunteers from the strategic plan, which.
Yes, we had so much fun.
Exactly, they're expecting the same thing, so. But it also keeps some of the synergy going, and that they already work together. My quick question is this, last time we had a conversation about adding students to this list. Were you able to ask?
I have, it's been a busy week at Granby Junior Senior High School last week for a lot of reasons, so I will have a conversation with Mr. Cavalo, but if you want to appoint this plus whatever student, we can, you know, get to step to the plate.
Is there a motion to appoint the Emergency Operations Plan Task Force? And with the allowance that we may be able to add some student members, if there is any interest, okay.
So.
Great.
Second?
Any questions or any discussions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and last but not least, I just put a memo in your package just to kind of let you know where I am with regard to my goals for evaluation. In January, you will be doing a midterm formative assessment, at which time I will be giving you evidence of what I've done. I just wanted to kind of give you an update on that. The student learning goal was around the curriculum piece that happens to be part of the strategic plan as well, so we are getting started. I did a professional workshop for senior leadership team, we'll be doing another one. It was scheduled for today, but for a lot of reasons, we didn't have people who were able to come, so we've rescheduled it for next week. We planned out a professional development day for all faculty in the development of curriculum tools on November third, and you'll get some documentation on that day, as well as some feedback on their presenter. They happen to be sitting at this table. The professional practice goal was to work with the community of Granby to increase engagement with the schools and so on, and so three basic activities was the Strategic Planning Task Force, the Emergency Operations Plan Task Force, and then attendance at meetings in the district and in the town. I'm glad to say one of them is done. So that's done. You just voted the Emergency Operations Plan Task Force, so that's the next thing. Basically, with the select board and the town officials, most of this has been done through the Shared Services Working Group that met over the spring and summer months to forge the agreement on the Department of Public Facilities. We had a screening committee that screened applicants, and Mr. Martin and I are going to interview this week and hopefully get somebody appointed to that position sooner rather than later. I've been going to the school building committee meetings, had a chance to go to Boston to meet with the MSBA, been trying to work very closely with the owner's project manager and the architects on that as well. Put up the website that contains some of the information about the project. I intended a PTO meeting back in September to talk about the new digital backpack policy, surveyed parents and received feedback on two items. The coffee and conversation one, twenty-five people responded. And, you know, there is definitely some interest with regard to taking a look at, the building project was a popular topic, curriculum and programs was a popular topic, as was budget. So those will be three things certainly that we can talk about at those informational meetings. There was a fairly decent cross-section of people who liked the early morning thing while dropping students off, and other people who liked the evening thing, so not so much interested in after, right after school. So, so we'll try and mix it up so that there's a little bit of both to do with that. And then, of course, the after-school survey program, which again, half seventy people respond back to that, I thought was, you know, a great showing. In terms of the district improvement goal, the first one was to do a thorough policy review, and we are well on the road to starting that. The Policy Subcommittee is up and running, and we're going to gear up and take a look at the instruction and student sections moving forward. Take those a little out of sequence, because there are some things we've discovered that need to have some work done. And then the five-year capital plan, which is coming up pretty soon. So again, the consultant Jonathan and I will be working on trying to get what's in line for this building, at least out there, so. So it's been a busy late summer and early fall, and more to come.
Well done, thank you.
My goodness.
Yeah, sleep is overrated.
Yeah, I wonder how many hours of sleep she gets.
Hopefully, students are not watching this one.
Well, you know. And on the capital front, Saturday, the contractors were here working on the two bathrooms, because they had to shut the main off to the building. The valves within the bathrooms could not be shut off fully enough for them to be able to work, so we shut off the water to the buildings. And then they did their thing, and we turned everything back on and sent them on their way, but they made some good progress in the two bathrooms, so things are coming along.
It was good the water came back on, right?
Yes, I said to them, I said, when I, when they came in Saturday, I said, "Just make sure when you turn it on, do it slowly. These are fifty-year-old pipes, and if you put seventy PSI through those pipes all at once, we could have other problems." So they were gentle, and everything was up and running. They tested some of the other bathrooms in the building to make sure everything was working okay, so, you know.
Thank you. Just one, one quick note. I don't know what the context might be, but if there is any opportunity for us to connect with, say, the Finance Committee or the Select Board outside the budget process, before, you know, we all feel the tension of heading to work through some numbers, that might be helpful, you know, to come together and talk about things in a more productive, constructive manner, not that we're not doing that, but it's, it happens to be a pretty stressful period, the budget, budgeting time, so.
Right, and it might be worth having a conversation with them now that you've voted a strategic plan, because they were invited to participate and saw the cast of classes we had invited and said no thank you, but, you know, certainly would be able to weigh in and to help us think through some of the things that are in the strategic plan.
That was something that we committed to the Finance Committee on, was more regular communication and more transparency. So we need to keep that on the front burner and follow through on that.
So this plan will be sent to the Select Board?
Sure.
And maybe the members of the Finance Committee, then they can't say they don't have seen it, and maybe we follow up.
That's a good suggestion.
Yep. The other thing too, that this is a relatively new development, is that in talking with the principals, we're seeing more and more of our students who are really struggling in the domain of social-emotional issues. And this is not a Granby-specific thing, because it's happening in districts around the Valley and across the Commonwealth. And so one of the things we talked about at Senior Leadership Team this morning was to try and reach out to some area agencies who do work in either behavioral and mental health or provide support to families who are struggling financially or whatever else, and sort of have a conversation with them around what we're seeing, what it is they bring to the table. I did this in a former district, and it was really the folks that came to the table. We had the Greater Y of Springfield, we had Behavioral Health Network, we had the Carson Center, Valley Human Services, and Ware was at the table with us. You know, just having some different people at the table talking about what it is that we're seeing with kids, where we need to partner with other agencies to try and help wrap around kids who are struggling. And it was interesting for them as providers to hear from each other, what each other does, and, oh, well, we could do this, that's helpful in this kind of way, and then sort of set up some sort of partnership with other agencies. We met, the Collaborative, for example, does workshops in the area of early childhood and parenting. See if we can get them to bring some of that to Granby, those kinds of things, because we're finding that there are, even our little ones are having some issues. And so that's another piece of this sort of outreach to the broader community that we think we'd like to do, is just to have some conversation with some area service providers in this area, and to say, here's what we're seeing with our kids, here's what, you know, we're hoping, you know, that we can have a discussion about who offers what, how can we partner, how can the district support you, how can you support us, how can we work together, so.
Is River Valley Counseling still coming in and providing therapy?
Mm-hmm. That's charged to insurance, Carson Center, and Ware does the same thing. That's billed to insurance, where the Bridge Program in Amherst is actually an arm of the juvenile justice system. And so they are on a ten-year grant, state-funded, to be able to provide supports as well. So that's, they're a relatively new program. You know, there's a probation officer that works with juvenile kids, and some of our kids are, interact with the court system, you know, and having Brian be at the table as well, I think would be, you know, a helpful thing. And just, again, have that conversation about how can we help support kids in this area, because they're not going to be successful academically if they're struggling socially, emotionally, so how do we deal with that? I'm preaching to the choir over here, I know. So that's another piece of the outreach that's going to start to happen as well.
And how, with the FST program through Brightside, now they do, it's like parental education and outreach for parents and children with special needs? Have a pretty amazing program.
And groups are really beneficial, especially at the high school level. It could be groups around depression or anxiety, or, you know, developing coping skills.
Right. You know, I think we're making some inroads with the Restorative Practices Program here, and, you know, West Street and East Meadow are getting into this positive behavioral intervention supports, but for those kids who really require stronger interventions, you know. And our Reflection Center at the high school has been busy. Been a lot of traffic through there, and it's, kids are struggling. And it's not an easy world to grow up in, and kids are struggling. And it's not just Granby, it's everywhere. And so what do we do to help them be able to cope with the stresses of life so that they can be available for learning, I think is, is a huge thing that we need to think about, so.
Thank you. So I guess that, that's all we have for the reports and recommendations. We'll move to new business. We have a policy revision for our advertising in the school's policy.
Policy Subcommittee met a little bit earlier. You have in your informational letter from the Girl Scouts about flyer that, that they felt that the policy was a little too constraining about. So I took a look at the policy and suggested some language which is embold about doing posters. I spoke with all of the principals, and the principals were on board with being able to have bulletin board space available for that. So I did put some language in both the policy and in the exhibit that follows it to do that. When the Policy Subcommittee met earlier this evening, they also suggested that we add a sentence that says, "School-affiliated fundraising information may be sent home in hard copy at the discretion of the superintendent." So I think PTO is a little concerned about fundraising letters, if they only go electronically, will people see that stuff? So that was the recommendation of the Policy Subcommittee.
So we'd like to make sure that, we'd like to pursue the digital backpack and make it fully operational for everyone in the future, but at least some feedback that we received from the PTO led us to believe that at this time, some folks may not be as familiar with the digital backpack, so until that time, at the very least, we just wanted to make sure that the fundraising opportunities are well advertised for the PTO. And it's at the discretion of the superintendent, and we said "may" as opposed to "shall", so it leaves some room to wiggle depending on the circumstances.
And I know that the Girl Scouts asked that flyers be sent home with every child, and if you remember that memorandum from David Driscoll that I shared with you this summer, and if you don't, I have extra copies with me if you want to see them. But he, the memorandum, which has really been the gold standard for the state, is that for people like the Girl Scouts or other kinds of non-school organizations, we cannot compel students to take something home, we can make it available, but we can't say, oh, the Girl Scouts are having this, so I'm going to tuck it in every kid's backpack. We can't do that. So the Girl Scouts' request of putting something in every backpack is not something we could accommodate anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, we, we do have, our, our vision is that we want less paper, and it's fine to have no exceptions for fundraising, and having a bulletin board is certainly one way to accommodate. I just don't want it to come to school.
Yeah.
And then, because then everybody's going to say, well, we, we need this for this reason, we need that for that reason, and.
Yeah. So I guess we have.
Yeah, the Policy Subcommittee voted unanimously to recommend this policy as amended to you for approval. Technically, you usually have to do a first reading and then a second reading and a vote, but if you want to vote to supersede the first reading and just go forward, since this is a policy that's been written anyways, just adding some language to it, that's, again, up to your discretion.
So if you would like to consider this the first reading, that's fine. If you want to waive the first reading, consider this the second reading and approve it as amended. If you wanna waive the first reading, consider this the second reading and approve it as amended.
So you would need a motion to waive the first reading?
Okay, so is there a motion to waive the first reading? Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so I guess the second motion is to approve the policy KHB and KHB-dash-E, advertising in the schools as revised and amended. The revised version is what you received in your package, and the amendment is what Judy just mentioned with that single sentence. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're done with our old business. We have one item under upcoming business.
We are having a great deal of difficulty trying to obtain substitutes.
I noticed that with all the...
And when I looked at how much we pay substitutes, we are at the bottom of the barrel. I have done some research with some of our neighboring districts, so at the next meeting, I will probably bring forward a proposal to increase substitute rates, 'cause we just can't get them. And it's, we're being told, Anne Marie Sapowski, who does the substitute coordination, is being told that people are not, are working in other districts, 'cause they pay more.
Which Granby's at now?
Of course they are.
Which Granby's at right now?
Granby, we're at, pretty much at the bottom.
Which is what? How much?
Teachers get sixty-five dollars a day, nurses get twenty-five dollars an hour, paras get, you would ask me this, and I don't have the numbers in front of me. The paras, I don't remember, but custodians get ten dollars an hour. We can't find a custodial substitute for long enough money.
So is this something we're gonna be talking about next meeting?
At the next meeting, yeah. So I'll have all of those hard numbers for you, and as well as what other, some other area districts are paying their substitutes. Some districts, actually, for teachers, do a two-tiered system, so that if you are actually a licensed educator, the day rate is more than if you're not. So that may be, you know, to encourage, you know, new teachers who can't seem to find a position or somebody who's home raising a family but would like to work a couple of days a week and has the license. You know, obviously, having a licensed teacher in front of kids is the more desirable thing. So if you pay a little differential for that, that may help.
I assume this is going to affect the budget?
It could potentially, but you also have a clause in your contract that has a per-period, you know, number for teachers to fill in. So like at the high school, if I can't find a sub, I'm asking teachers to fill in per-period, and you're spending more per day by doing that than you are by hiring a sub. So if we could get a decent bank of subs, that could potentially not cause that other problem to happen.
Okay, makes sense. So we'll look forward to that next time, I guess. And you have all the correspondence that pertain to this particular meeting in your package. Next, we have an executive session. We'll vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, Part A, 3, "To discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining. As doing so, in an open session, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session." We have, we need a roll call to enter the session.
Deanne Hayner Kowski, aye.
Jennifer Thorne, aye.
Jim Petrus, aye.
Anne Rayven, aye.